This conference will now be recorded.
Should we please rise? I'd like to wish to divide the United States and America and consider public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with delivery, in just this world.
Rule call please.
Robinson, Getz, Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Atson.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Fliss.
Here.
First item on our agenda is the approval of the previous session's minutes for the council meeting dated October 3, 2022.
Most of you approve?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item is acceptance of the traffic advisory commission minutes dated July 13, 2022.
Most of you approve?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item is the acceptance of planning zoning commission minutes dated August 31, 2022.
Most of you approve?
One second. We, Kelvin, how do we need to do that?
Yeah, Council on Boston knows the federal rules in the area in those minutes. Don Cating was listed as both Atson and present, and I am pretty confident that he was present. And so if you want to accept those first minutes, then you can choose or you can delay it. And then we get confirmation.
Was this the network meeting where we discussed the decreeatorium?
I don't know if we discussed it.
So would it make me go through and postpone it for the next meeting and check in the list? Everybody good on that?
I didn't know if we need to make sure that looks correct.
Good deal. Do you have the most opposed?
Most opposed.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, the rule call standing committees. Up first, we have finance administration. Care about Marshall, you got it before?
I have six items tonight, sir. First one is each year, the city has an independent audit conducted. It is this practice to change audit firms routinely. This year, the city went with a new firm to follow these practices. With the new firm, there is a little more work involved to get the firm up to speed with the city. Representatives from Williams Keeper Audit Firm are now ready to present their final report.
We have the report in front of you, and it focuses on the case that you can start.
It should be. Thank you, Kelvin. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Schultz. I'm an audit partner at Williams Keepers in Columbia. Joining me is Kristen Brown. She was the manager on the audit and will be sharing the presentation this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit. As was previously mentioned, this was our first year auditing the City of Fidelia, so certainly appreciate the opportunity as well as to present our summary reports to you all this evening. So this summary report really just hits the highlights of the individual audit reports that we issued as a result of our audit of the city's financial statements as of and for the fiscal year that ended March 31, 2022. The first report, if you turn to the first page, which is maybe the page that you already turned to when they were handed out, is the audited financial statements. So we issued an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. In our opinion, the city's financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. That is the best opinion that you can get, and it means that the users of the city's financial statements can rely upon them. Management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements. Although we prepared them, it is a common practice for us as independent auditors to do so. They were reviewed and approved by management and accepted as their representation before they were issued just last week. We did use our judgment in determining how to audit the city. We performed a risk assessment process by reviewing balances, transactions, processes, and controls, and we focused our attention on areas where the financial statements could be materially misstated. So this means that we did not audit every balance or every transaction, but we did enough work in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements themselves include two different sets of financial statements. There are the government-wide statements. Those are on pages 13 and 14. So if you scroll back in your blue book, the actual audited financial statements are behind the first manila divider. Those government-wide statements are on pages 13 and 14, and they essentially include all of the city's funds as well as any long-term balances. So capital assets, long-term debt, other liabilities are included in those government-wide financial statements on pages 13 and 14. There are also fund financial statements, which provide more detail, and those are separated into governmental fund financial statements. Those are on pages 15 through 18. There are statements for the proprietary funds, essentially the utility funds, on pages 19 through 21, and the fiduciary funds, which are on pages 23 and 24. There is a table at the top of page two of the summary report that summarizes the highlights from the government-wide financial statements as of and for the fiscal year that ended March 31, 2022. The audited financial statements themselves are not comparative, but there is a section in the report, the management's discussion and analysis, that's on pages four through 12, that discusses the changes in the various categories compared to 2021. So again, we've included a summarized table here in the summary report. Really, the only significant change that I wanted to highlight is really more of a presentation matter. So during fiscal year '22, the city determined that the Baco Regional Health Center and the Fidelia Public Library should be reported as discreetly presented component units. They were previously reported as blended component units. So the presentation of those two component units does look a little bit different than the current year report as it does in prior years. Those two entities are still included in the city's audited financial statements. They're just reported separately from the primary government. So their financial statements and notes are still included, just in a different presentation. We also performed a single audit for the city this year. Because the city had expenditures of federal awards in excess of $750,000, it was required to have a single audit. The city had federal expenditures of approximately $1.1 million during fiscal year '22. There are various programs listed in a schedule of expenditures of federal awards or ACIFA on pages 81 and 82, the details of all the individual programs. We did issue two additional reports as a result of our single audit. The first one is on pages 76 and 77. It's a report on internal control and compliance related to financial reporting. It does report a significant deficiency, which I'll touch on in just a moment, but no instances of non-compliance. And our second report is on internal control and compliance related to major federal programs. That's on pages 78 and 80, and it had an unmodified or a clean opinion on compliance and no findings. So that one is a clean letter. Going back to that significant deficiency, again, that can be found on pages 76 and 77, or at least referred to there. It'll be reported in more detail in the second page. It essentially just relates to the preparation of the city's financial statements, essentially because we both prepared those financial statements, as I mentioned previously, and we proposed significant adjustments to them as part of our audit. We are required by our professional standards to report this as at least a significant deficiency in internal control. So those adjustments were primarily related to year-end accrual entries, to report accrual balances properly at the end of the year. So that's your receivables, payables, capital assets, long-term debt, as well as to report some of the GAZB 34 fund activity that includes those long-term balances. We discussed this with Kelvin and Jessica. They plan to address this in preparation for next year's audit. So again, just something that we are required to report since we did propose significant adjustments to the books and records of the city, and we prepared the financial statements. But I think this is something that will be resolved as soon as next year, fiscal year '23. Are there any questions about the audited financial statements? Anything I can go into further detail on on that significant deficiency? Anything like that? Okay. All right, well, I will turn it over to Kristen to cover the rest of the summary report.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kristen Brown, and like Amanda mentioned, I am the audit manager for the City of Fidelia Audit this year. I will be covering the next two letters, the first being the auditor's communication letter. The full letter is in your packet after the next manila divider. So this letter consists of comments about the audit process and its results are required under our professional standards to be communicated to the city council for the city. I will just cover the highlights here. We noted no transactions that we considered both unusual and significant, and there were no changes in accounting policies during fiscal year 2022. In fiscal year 2023, two standards could impact the city, the first being GAZB 87 related to leases and the second being GAZB 91 related to conduit debt. So as we prepare for the fiscal year 2023 audit, we'll have communications with Kelvin and Jessica about how those could impact the city for fiscal year 2023. We did evaluate the estimates that affect the financial statements and found them reasonable in relation to the financial statements as a whole. We also noted the financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, and all required disclosures are included. We did find that the accounting records were in good order, but like Amanda mentioned, we did propose several significant adjustments as a result of our audit procedures. Lastly, we had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues, and we had no difficulties in performing our audit. We felt we received full cooperation from everyone involved in the city. Any questions related to that letter?
Is there going to be an increase in the burden of reporting with GAZB 87 and GAZB 91?
Yes, so GAZB 87 could impact the city as far as additional adjustments to the books. So it is clarifying reporting related to operating leases. So operating leases of the city will now be recorded as a right-of-use asset and a financing lease. So there will be an additional asset and liability reported rather than it just flowing through the statement of activities as an expense. So that could impact. I'm not sure if you guys have any, if you're the lessor on any leases?
No.
Okay.
But we do have a couple of rules that primarily is the wheel loaders and the DC as well as city streets. Those are recorded right now as operating leases. We have the calculations, so it's going to have a couple of pages to report.
Yes, there'll probably be some additional footnote disclosures related to that standard. And then GAZB 91 could just require some additional footnote disclosures, but no proposed adjustments or anything like that to the financial statements, just providing a little bit more clarity on conduit debt obligations of the city. Yep. Okay, the next letter I will cover, it should be the last letter in your packet. This is the management letter. So this letter is used to communicate any findings we may have about the city's internal control as well as certain other matters that we deem significant enough to warrant the council's attention. So a few highlights. So the scope of our engagement is not directed towards an opinion on the adequacy of internal control, but we do consider internal control as a basis for designing our audit procedures. So a deficiency in internal control exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or their employees in the normal course of business functions to prevent or detect incorrect misstatements on a timely basis. So there are several types of deficiencies, the first being a material weakness, which would mean there is a reasonable possibility of a material misstatement to the financial statements. The next being a significant deficiency, which is less severe than a material weakness, but would still require our disclosure to the council. And then there are other deficiencies or internal control deficiencies that we would just provide to you as recommendations. So as Amanda mentioned, there was one significant deficiency related to the preparation of financial statements and the recording of the accrual adjustments and GAZB 34 adjustments, similar to what is presented in the single audit report. And then lastly, we did become aware of several matters or opportunities for strengthening internal control and operating efficiency, but these did not meet the definition of a significant deficiency or material weakness. These are related to bank reconciliations, capital assets, grant reporting, and inter-fund balances and transfers. Any questions related to that letter?
Are there any questions about the summary report specifically, the audit in general? Anything we can answer for the good of the group this evening?
You'll need a little time.
Yeah. We thought we'd go through it page by page. For the sake of time, did not. Well, if any questions come up after this evening's meeting, Kelvin and Jessica certainly know how to get ahold of us. So feel free to let us know if you've got any questions. But again, we appreciate the opportunity from the audit. We're forward to being here next year. Kelvin and Jessica and our teams, we're great to work with. So we'll be back in about a year. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Next, I have Jessica Powell, our finance director, will provide an update on tax revenue trends.
Okay, so what we are looking at is for August sales and looking at the fiscal year-to-date sales and use tax. Combined the sales and use tax fiscal year-to-date is up over $530,000, which is a 5.4% increase over the prior year, and it's a budget variance of $133,971. The franchise tax, the gas and electric are up, which could be weather-related. So gas has been consistently higher month to month, and then the electric was higher for this last month. So both of those together combine for that increase over the prior year. And transportation taxes, gas taxes, up 13.6% fiscal year-to-date. We're still wondering if that's going to hold. And then within that, the vehicle sales tax is trailing fiscal year-to-date by 8.4%. And even though in August, we did make some stride forward, it's been more positive direction in that category. And property tax payments, the bulk of those receipts come in December through January. So why that's lower than... Any questions?
Thank you, Jessica. Staff has been working with brokers to bring together recommendations for employee benefit packages. The brokers were able to bring to us options on major changes in how the city structures and funds the program. Since the renewal came in at a stable price point, staff recommends these major changes be delayed until next year, when there is more data and time to review. Staff has pulled together some benefit enhancement options for council to consider this year. With that, there's a brief space.
All right, well, good evening. So I will be honest, I am extremely excited to be sharing this information with you, as well as Mr. Shaw. In all honesty, I've been doing this for about 20 years now, and this is the second time I've been able to give such great news. So I'm very, very excited about this evening. So just wanted to kind of give a little bit of information, just a little bit of refreshers and reminders. So as you guys are aware, we went out to bid this year on insurance broker. IMA was selected and won the bid with an effective date of October 1. So they really had a lot of stuff to do in a very short period of time. And we've been extremely happy with them. The city's current insurance offerings, we do have medical, dental, and vision. We also have life and supplemental as well as our ancillary products. So we offer short-term facility, accident, critical illness, and hospital indemnities to our employees. So here's the great news. So originally, IMA came back to us and said that Blue Cross and Blue Shield came back with a 1.5% increase, which in all reality, it's not in itself is amazing. Last year, we were looking at almost a 40% increase, so drastic difference. They have changed, not they, meaning the insurance companies have changed how rates are actually looked at. So prior to this year, you're based on a medical loss, what's considered a medical loss ratio, and it was typically from the previous 12 rolling months. So they switched it up this year, and actually, they're looking at the past 24 months instead of 12. So we were really concerned because we weren't sure, obviously, how that was going to affect us. So again, with a 1.5% increase, we were thrilled. IMA actually went back to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They were actually able to bring it down to a 0% increase for the city. So again, fantastic news. So in looking at that, we wanted to go ahead and see if we could make any positive changes to our plan. Because last year, we did have to make some changes that unfortunately weren't very positive to again get that almost 40% increase down. So we were looking at a couple of different things because the one challenge that we do have with the three plans that we have is the cost of insurance for families. So we wanted to see what we could do to again help get that cost down. So a couple of things that we looked at, so we have three plans. We have two PPOs and a high deductible plan. So we wanted to see if we could actually kind of see and get some real differentiators between the three plans so that we could maybe have a gold plan, silver plan, bronze plan, just kind of look at a couple of different things. We wanted to look at what we consider as a bare bones plan so that again, families could have coverage at a lower cost, but deductibles might be a little bit higher, co-pays maybe a little bit higher. But just again, wanted to see what our options could look like. We actually looked at an $8,000 deductible. That's not what we're actually bringing forward tonight. But again, we just want to let you know that we looked at a lot of different options to see what we could do for families. Looked at self-funding options. We also looked at increasing, again, one of our current plans is a PPO 4500. Looked at raising it to that $8,000, looked at raising it to $5,000. Do we make changes to co-pays? Do we make changes to prescription costs? Again, all different ways to see if we can lower that family cost. We also looked at cost-sharing options to see again if the city can take on a little bit extra burden to get those costs down. And then we also want to discuss with all of you is that currently with our high deductible plan, our HSA plan, we are doing $100 contributions. We want to make sure that's still what we're wanting to do going forward. Now, I will have Mr. Shaw speak to the financial part of it.
Okay, just to kind of summarize there with what Shannon was talking about there, this shows you the different plans. The way insurance companies look at it or the way the brokers look at it, they kind of summarize the plan benefits that are within that plan. And so you can see the first three columns there is this Plan A. That's our current plan. That's the $3,000 PPO plan. It currently has a $30,000 deductible. It's after the deductible, it has an 80/20 coinsurance. The total out-of-pocket is $6,500 or $13,000 for the family. You have an office visit co-pay. So when you go to your primary care physician, you would pay a co-pay of zero. So and then if you went to a specialist, you'd have a co-pay of $100. Then going on down, if you go to urgent care, you would have a co-pay of $50, emergency room 250. And then go to a chiropractor, it'd be a co-pay of $50. But another piece of that, that's a big reason why a lot of folks choose the co-pay, are the PPO plans, is it comes with a drug card. And so when you get a prescription, your tier one or your generic drugs that you, if you can get a generic drug that prescribed, you just pay $5 a month for that prescription. Or $50 a month for that, what they call the tier two, the ones that there's no generic option for, that is a little more expensive. And then tier three, I can't remember. Basically, those are the more expensive and where there's only a branding drug. Those are basically the ones that you see the advertisements on TV and ask your doctor about because they are expensive. And then the mail order is typically, you get three months of a prescription through mail order, and it costs $1,250. So you get some savings again there. Instead of $15 for three months, it'd be $1,250. And then going across there, Plan B is what the majority of our employees are in, and it is the HSA option. The big difference there is, again, it's a $3,000 deductible, only an 80/20 coinsurance, but you do not have any office visits, co-pays, and no prescription drug card. So it is all out-of-pocket until you get to your deductible, and then it's an 80/20 just like the other. So on everything. Plan C is one that we kind of pulled together or modified a lot last year. It's a $4,500 deductible, and it's also an 80/20. The co-pay goes to $25 and $100. So again, you still have, if you need to go to the doctor, you just pay $25 and the insurance takes care of the rest, and that's outside your deductible. And then urgent care, again, is $50. Chiropractor is $100. And then you again have a very good prescription drug card. The next three columns there are if we just did the renewal. Now, we did the alternative rating there. We did give them to, even though it was a total no increase, they're based off of the loss runs in each individual plan. The Plan A actually went up, Plan B went down, and Plan C actually went up just a little bit. And so the things that Shannon talked about there, that one of the things that we looked at is trying to make that that basically PPO plan a little bit more reachable for families or dependents of any kind. We tried, basically taking some of those benefits down a little bit to try to get the premium lower. And so we changed it to a $5,000 deductible. It's, you know, $500. That doesn't move the needle a lot, honestly, when we were looking at it. But it does a little bit. But then the 70/30 coinsurance does help instead of the 80/20. And then we increased the out-of-pocket, or the coinsurance for office visits to $50. And then urgent care to $100. And then increased the drug card co-pay to $20.75 and $1.50. And then going across the bottom, you can see what the new premiums are. And then we'll get back more into those premium numbers here in a minute.
Okay, so what we're looking at or what we'd like to propose or discuss this evening is so with our HSA or our high deductible plan, as Mr. Shaw mentioned, we have the highest participation rate in. We've got 166 participants in the HSA. What we'd like to propose is no changes to that current plan. And then, of course, review, as mentioned, the HSA contribution. Do we continue to feed $100 each month for employees to be a part of that plan, which of course equates to about $1,200 a year, which does help with the out-of-pocket expense that they may have upfront. And we'd also like to review a cost-sharing option, which we currently don't have for dependent coverage. And we're recommending or suggesting possibly maybe 25%. With the PPO, the lower PPO, lower deductible PPO, the $3,000, we currently have 57 employees enrolled in there. Again, we're not looking to propose any plan changes necessarily. However, what we are planning to, or would like to recommend, is increasing the employee contribution from zero. It's about $35 a month. It's $34 and change. Because again, that is the richer plan. And even though it's the richer plan, obviously, it's the one that costs more if employees are in there and really utilize it. So really, $35 a month isn't very much. And with the other two plans, we do pay 100% of the employee coverage currently. And then with our PPO higher deductible, we currently have seven employees enrolled in there. Again, and we would like to look to increase the deductible from 4,500 to 5,000. And again, also review doing a cost share to help offset that dependent coverage for employees. So renewal, again, is discussed with no changes. If we do nothing and keep our current plans the way that they are, would be a 0% cost to the city or $0 cost. Renewal with proposed changes, about a 1% increase. Renewal with proposed changes, about a one percent increase. However, we of course do anticipate some employee movement, so they will move to different plans potentially, which can of course alter the costs a little bit. So we would anticipate about fifty employees would add dependent coverage with these changes, which would be about a four percent increase, which is equates to about seventy thousand dollars. And the good thing is, we did budget for this year, a five percent increase, so that would still come within, within the budget that was, we currently have or proposed for next year.
So again, keep them, keep them with, if you, if you remember what the coverages are. What we, what we are proposing is if you look at the first three, our first five columns there, the premium, the first one where it says premium, that is what's currently in the plan, in the current premium. The next column is what the employee pays, and then the next column is the percent that the employee pays for the total. And then the next column is what the city has been paying. So for example, on the, the three thousand deductible, the Plan A, we have forty-seven employees in there, the premium is five fifty-four a month, the employee pays zero currently, and the city pays five fifty-four sixteen a month. Now when you go across there, the 2023 renewal medical plan year rate is, is what we're proposing. And so under the PPO three thousand plan, again, no changes to that plan, and we would just take the amount that we, that we pay for the, the city pays for the premium for the employee only of five forty-three sixty-four, we would continue to contribute that regardless of whether they're in the PPO three thousand or in the HSA. And so that would leave, out of that premium renewal of five seventy-eight thirty-four, would mean that the employee would have to cover thirty-four seventy. If they want to have their spouse, the employee has to cover six seventy-eighty-eight. Employee and children would be five fifty-five twenty-one, and then the family coverage is eleven thirty-three fifty-six. And again, this is the most rich column, our rich plan. And then if you go over to the right further, where if the employee contribution change, you can see that compared to the current plan, or the current year, they would have an increase of thirty-five dollars sixty-one fifty-six and eighty-one. So then if you go down, and this is where, under current Plan B, if you look, that the renewal premium is five thirty-three sixty-four for the employee. And what I'm proposing, or what Shannon and I together are proposing, is that we would, in this case, cover twenty-five percent of the extra cost to added dependents, added dependent coverage. And so the employee would have to cover the seventy-five percent of the added dependent coverage, and in the city we cover twenty-five. So in the case of employee and spouse, the, the cost to the city goes up to six ninety-three fourteen, and then the employee only has to add five four forty-eight fifty-one. So that's a difference of a net decrease of a hundred and sixty dollars a month for the employee. The one that I, I often focus on is, is the employee and children, because we have a lot of employees that are, you know, that they need some sort of coverage for their, for their kids, and right now, under our current, current plan, it's just really hard for them to reach. And so that's where I was really trying to focus on getting that cost down. We got it down quite a bit. I mean, I wish it was a little lower, but it's, we cut it down to quite a bit, so three hundred and fifty-seven dollars a month for the employee, and that's a hundred and thirty-one dollars a month less than what they're currently paying. Plus, we're, we're still doing a hundred dollar contribution per month, or that's what we're proposing, that's what we're, here's for you guys to decide. And then if they want a family coverage, it's seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is two hundred and seventy-six dollars less than what they're paying now. So it makes it more reachable, and thereby a better benefit when we're competing for employees. And then, and then the big, the big change here, or another big part of the change here is, is then when we go to the PPO five thousand plan, you know, as Shannon and I talked, you know, the HSA plan is great, and a hundred dollars extra a month, or twelve hundred dollars that the city contributes, that really offsets a good share of the, of the deductible, and, and really gives it to the stop law. But then again, when you have an employee that's kind of, that's struggling to get by, you know, and, and maybe have some kids with some, maybe some chronic illnesses, or even just the normal, you know, having to go to the doctor every once in a while for strep throat or something along those lines, you know, that, that payment of that, of that out-of-pocket expense, when they're owing in the year, is hard for them to cash flow. And so, and then also, some employees just, just prefer to have that predictable, you know, I go to the doctor, fifty bucks, you know. And, and so we did this PPO plan, and we kept the contribution the same as what we do for the HSA plan, which again drives, drives down the, the cost to these employees. So again, we, we're essentially taking out a hundred dollars for, if they want to have their kids, so it's only three sixty-seven again, if they want to insure their kids, and then they again have that co-pay, and, I'm not speaking into the mic here, I'm looking across here. They have the co-pays and the co-insurance and, and the, and the prescription drug card. So there's two very good options to, to get their, their dependents covered much cheaper than what they are today. If we do that without assuming nobody adds dependents, you know, and just have the same thing, it's essentially just a one percent increase in the total overall cost to the city, but we really believe that this is probably more realistic. So this one assumes that we took forty-seven employees and they added either a spouse or children or a family coverage. And I, you know, I can't tell you, you know, how many are going to move to that, but I would say there's some. But, so I, I think that's an assumption, and actually I base that off, it's the assumption that the experts had. So if we do that, it's about a seventy thousand dollar increase to the city, or about four point six percent of the, of the current year budget. And in our current year budget, we did anticipate a five percent increase affecting January one. So that would put us right on top of what you all adopted in the budget for this year. On this evening?
No, I don't think so. The only other thing I would like to highlight is for the family coverage, we were able to hopefully potentially get down, if this is the direction we want to go, two hundred and twenty-five dollars to two hundred and seventy-six dollars a month, which is pretty considerable for, for our employees, so. And then with voluntary benefits, again, I, I've been ecstatic for weeks. They came back with no changes, so no rate changes here either, so everything stays status quo, which again is fantastic news. So again, what we would like to have discussion or guidance on this evening, or some direction, is again looking to make the changes with the PPO four thousand five hundred, looking at the cost-sharing option, do we continue with a hundred dollars, and then also increasing the employee contribution rate for the PPO three thousand deductible plan.
I like to continue the contributions to the savings account, HSA. We've got a program to keep people to stay now, a bonus.
Correct.
Can we help them avoid, can we contribute to our HSA, so that's pre-tax? HSA is pre-tax. But could we, could that bonus, instead of being paid to them in tax before, can we just add it to their HSA?
They could. They could just.
They could also do that.
Anyway. They could increase their HSA, assuming they have that room, but most will, then they can increase their HSA deduction to put that in there.
Right.
So that might be a way they could help a little bit at the beginning of the year if they've got.
Yeah.
I think if they're wanting to mine mine, I think the plan's well thought out, but I think that HSA contribution is important.
And to your point for another pre-tax option, if they wanted to, they could also increase their four fifty-seven. I realize that would affect medical, but they could do that as well if they didn't have the HSA.
Well, I want to make sure to know that. They're aware of that.
So we can certainly, well, you know, depending upon how we, how this, how all this goes this evening, I plan on putting out an email, because of course, we're getting a lot of questions with open enrollment coming up, you know, what do plans look like, how does everything look? So I plan on sending an email out tomorrow morning, and some employees kind of had a good idea what was coming, and we can certainly make sure that's in there.
So let's see if this way, have any objections, increases in the PPO four thousand plan to the five thousand deductible plan and changing the budget? Any objections? Having heard none, move to the next side. Any objections to the cost-sharing option for spouse, child, family tiers on the HSA and the five thousand PPO plan?
No. I think, I like that idea.
Any objections to continuing with the hundred dollars per month HSA contribution? Any objections to the employee contribution for PPO three thousand based on employee-only contribution from HSA plan? Having heard none, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve health insurance renewal force as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Please do here.
Thank you for your honor. Council members, as well as others, have expressed the need to develop a more formalized code of conduct for our city volunteers. Shannon, our human resources director, has worked with the department heads that manage volunteer programs and has developed a proposed code of conduct. Council consider it. Do you have any council discussion regarding the nature of the code of conduct? Anybody? All right. Having heard none, I'll call for the reading of the words.
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-two, an ordinance adopting a volunteer code of conduct for the city.
Second reading. Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-two, an ordinance adopting a volunteer code of conduct for the city.
Next. Second. Rule published.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
As we continue to deal with the ongoing effects of the greater resignation, council director staff bring back budget amendment for consideration. The sign and stay pay will provide an incentive to come to work for the city or to continue to work for the city. This program would provide somewhat of a sign-on bonus and also provide our current employees with an incentive to stay rather than leaving or other employment. This program will pay five hundred dollars for full-time employees that receive paycheck December second, and then another five hundred dollars to those that receive paycheck March tenth. This program is designed to go through this budget year with the thought that we will have a better understanding of what the market is doing, so we can adjust the program if needed. Any council discussion? Having heard none, we have a resolution in ordinance in connection with this. I'll call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution number nineteen eighty-nine, a resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three relating to the sign and stay pay incentives.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have a new ordinance, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number two thousand twenty-two one dash one seventy-three, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three regarding sign and stay pay for employees.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-three, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three regarding sign and stay pay for employees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rule published.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Let's do the time board. Yes.
Yeah, five yes, one abstain, one yes.
Can we get five? Okay, we got five yes. Okay. All right. Your honor. All right, next we have Chairman Marshall, up next we have public work, Chairman Oldham.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have come to glorious part of the season, budget season. So hello to our long council evening, and we will start it off with Director Roger for our cemetery presentation. These will happen up until January, and we hear from all of our department heads, and here's the needs and the goals and the capacity to be sponsored.
Kind of start off here and give you an idea of what we do out at the cemetery for the city of today in Pettis County. We're providing burial service, not only just for Pettis County, it seems like more and more every day that we're dealing with a lot of services, burials coming in from out of, out of state even, and out of the, out of the city area. The people that grew up here, they're coming back. Families are bringing them back here because of other families that's already here. We're.
Second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm going to get stammered.
22 to 28.
28.
Bill number? Bill number 2022-174, an ordinance waiving open container laws and imposing other conditions relating to the Liberty Center Association for the Arts Rocky Horror Picture Show event.
Final passage. Second. Rule published.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Absane, I'm on the Liberty Center board.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Let's do the time order.
Yes.
Yeah. Five yes, one abstain, one yes.
Can we get five? Okay, we got five yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Your honor. All right. Next we have Chairman Marshall. Up next we have Public Works, Chairman Oldham.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have come to glorious part of the season, budget season. So hello to our long council evening. And we will start it off with Director Roger for our cemetery presentation. These will happen up until January. We'll hear from all of our department heads and here's the needs and the goals and the capacity to be sponsored.
We do kind of start off here and give you an idea of what we do out at the cemetery for the city of Sedalia and Pettis County. We're providing burial service, not only just for Pettis County, it seems like more and more every day that we're dealing with a lot of services, burials coming in from out of, out of state even, and out of the, out of the city area. The people that grew up here, they're coming back. Families are bringing them back here because of other families that's already here. We're providing a casket and cremation burials both in ground and above ground in our column burial that we have. Since we were founded in 1866, there have been 24,706 burials through September of this year. We've had 100 burials through September of this year alone. We've currently sold 57 grave lots and 14 niches. Those numbers changed dramatically today. Sold six graves today and two of the niches today. Our personnel, we set military markers, government markers for our veterans. We oversee the monument companies that come in from here in Sedalia and surrounding areas to set headstones to ensure that the proper location is set, to ensure that the proper footing is put underneath these to where that we're not having to go back and work on them five years down the road. There have been a total of 41 headstones set so far this year, 14 military markers set this year that our employees have overseen. The headstones are down and the reason that they're down is because the monument companies cannot get shipments of granite in. They've got orders right now, they're telling people that go into a monument company, eight to 10 months is where it's at. So those numbers are down a little bit this year from where they normally are. During the spring and the summer and the fall, we're mowing approximately 70 acres each week. We're bagging grass and leaves when needed. In the wintertime, we're straightening on these older headstones, weather permitting, we're trimming trees, we're working on mowing equipment, clearing roadways of snow when needed. Our Hebrew Cemetery that's located out on South Grant, that was turned over to the city back in 2001, there's currently 235 people that are buried in that cemetery. We maintain it and on a weekly basis over there on the mowing and trimming and things there. Calvary Cemetery lies within Crown Hill. A lot of people don't realize that. It's owned through the Catholic Church here in Sedalia. We maintain that ground. I do not sell the graves in that ground for them, but I do a lot of the footwork for them. David Dick, which is our county commissioner at the moment, he is the gentleman that sells those. As far as the burial goes, all the opening and closing fees are collected there. They do pay us a monthly fee to maintain those grounds. Calvary was founded in 1868. There's 3,902 people buried there as of 3 September of this year. Our strategies, we'll look at plotting out new areas for burials, new roads in the next couple of years. We currently have about 2,080 graves left in the new addition area of the cemetery. Some of these are not the best lots because of being next to roadway, ditches and things, low areas having water issues and things like that. Probably out of that 2,000, we're looking at probably roughly 500 graves that would be affected by this. So in the neighborhood, 1,500 graves left. I haven't put an exact figure to that, but that's pretty close. The column burial that we installed back in November of 2019, 64 niches in there, 46 of them have been sold through September, another two today. We ordered the new column burial that was in this year's budget back in July. That estimated cost is going to be around 21,500. It's going to take at least eight months or longer to get here, so we're probably looking at March, April. This may even be something that we need to look at carrying over in the next year's budget. In reference to the RFP for awarding bid for the purchase and reuse of the property at 1030 North Engineer with bids to be opened on the 26th of this month, I am totally against selling this property. This property was purchased years ago for the cemetery to have room for expansion. It's the best ground that we own out there currently that has not been plotted out.
Roger? That property at 1030 North Engineer, is that right, Jeff, of your office?
No, sir. That is the pro, this is the property that is east of Engineer. It's currently, was just in beans. It's been harvested here in the last week. Everything, if you hit the corner of Tower and Engineer, there is a hayfield. The hayfield belongs to Calvary Cemetery. We own the property north of that. It then goes clear to the tree line on the east side, over behind the residence there on Cedar Drive. We go north, not completely degradation, about three quarters of the way up there, the curbing stops, that's where the property ends with the cemetery property.
What size is that property?
There is 19.28 acres, I believe is what's there. Yeah.
How many, if you look at five-year average on the amount of in-ground burials you're doing per year, does that make sense?
Last year, I mean, we were 74 in-ground burials, 74 above-ground burials is where, you know, cremation burials versus casket, that's what I meant to say. Casket, some of the cremations we're still doing in-ground too.
Yeah.
But I don't have those figures with me tonight to tell you exactly where we're, where we're at on that.
You sell about 70 lots a year.
Average is 70.8 lots a year is what it's averaged over the last five years.
Seven feet or seven?
Seventy.
Seventy. Okay, wow. Those 1,500 that we have right now is about 20 years.
Last year, they had 110 burials for September 21, have sold 60 grave lots and 14 niches.
Yeah, that's about right. So on this ground that's in the RFP that's being proposed to be sold, it's the best ground that we own, it's the highest ground that we own, it drains well. As far as opening up, you know, make the cost of this area a lot less expensive because we're not dealing with water drainage issues and things like that.
Does Calvary own the lots there just in the south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This, it lies to the north side of Calvary Cemetery. Calvary Board talked with them here a couple of weeks ago. They are ready to start planning and plotting out their area. They are very close to having no graves left to sell in the current area where they're at. They would like to see this done in the next year or so. Now, they do not sell the amount of graves that we do in a year's time. I don't know what, what their figure is exactly on what they sell. But when we open this up, working with them together to build roads, to have a road that goes down and splits the property just like it does in the cemetery now, where we're currently at on the west side, in Crown Hill and Calvary is split by a road, that's going to be a benefit for both of us to share that cost, to make it, to lay those out and have those roads where we can save some money putting those in and not waste as much ground that could be used for burials.
Where's Calvary at currently?
As far as?
On the, in Crown Hill?
In Crown Hill.
It's, it's on the, isn't it? No, it's in Cheltenham.
It's, it's basically from where Tower Street ties into it, right there on the east side of the cemetery. It lies just barely north of how that's laid right there. There's a wrought iron fence that lays along the front edge of Calvary on the east side.
Okay. Yeah. I'm sorry. It's, yeah. That's it, right at Calvary, right there? Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep. South of Gate 5 and just south of Gate 3. They have two gates that go into their cemetery. As far as the property that, in reference to the RFP here on this 1030 North Engineer, there's no underground utilities on that. There's no water, gas sewer. They all stop down south of Tower Street. There's electrical service that's overhead that runs along the east side of Engineer going north. It's currently being farmed. It brings in a revenue of approximately 3,800 a year off crops. If this was to be developed into residential housing for, or into a school building site, it'd cause greater runoff that comes into the cemetery now, where the pond is. On a really hard rain now, we get runoff from off of Engineer and off of that farm ground that does occasionally flood the pond that we have now. It just won't hold it. Which then causes areas out into the cemetery that we've got to go back in and clean up. Just like this spring, there was corn in that field last year. The corn stalks and stuff nearly washed across Engineer into the drain system, into the pond, and then on into the cemetery when the pond flooded. Therefore, we went in, had to clean all that up. As far as selling this property, it's going to cause more traffic in the area that we don't need, to cause more safety issues for our employees that are riding mowers back and forth across the street. You know, we're using the backhoe that's slow-moving and our trucks going back and forth all the time. I've had five different neighbors in that neighborhood since this came out in the paper, they've stopped in, they're not in favor of it either, and they've asked me what's going on with it. The area of the cemetery that's located behind and south of the office is not as suitable because of the low area having water issues. Those are things that we're going to have to address down the line if that's the area that we end up going to. The south ditch, I had visited with Brenda on this and it's been several years ago, and at that time she gave me an estimate that probably looking at a quarter of a million to box that in. And I'm sure the cost is more than that today. That, that ditch there south of my office catches water over 130 acre area from streets and residential that lays to the east of Engineer that drains into that. The area behind the office is low, we've got drainage that comes out of the cemetery plus the retention system that's at my office. So those are things that, you know, we would have to address too. The area that we, right there where the office is also, Mike Holman has worked for the city at the cemetery for 34 years. It's filled with a lot of metal junk from the residents that lived there years ago. A lot of this has worked its way to the top of the ground over the years, and some of these pieces that they had to been removed with the backhoe and the chain. And we're talking 10, 15, 20-foot length pieces that they have pulled out of the ground over the years. We still continue to pick one up occasionally. The property to the west of Veterans Memorial Drive that the city purchased last year, this is an area that I would like to make into a cremation area only because of the amount of trees that are in there, plus the fact it is a little bit low. It's not, it's not a suitable casket burial place for the excess of, you know, tree roots and things that are going to be there when we, you know, clean this up a little bit more. Public Works is helping us with this project. I would like to try to put some walking trails in that area and, you know, dress this up a little bit, make this into something that we can sell cremation-only lots out of and utilize part of this property. Part of it's got the ditch through it that we know that we can't do anything with that. When we purchased that property last year, Chief Work came to me from the police department, was extremely thrilled that we were going to clean this area up. We've got a lot of drug dealings that go on down in that timber, a lot of other mischief that, that goes on down there also. And he was so happy that we were going to clean this area up. So we're just trying to make it, you know, the area safer and look, look like a cemetery and a park. That's what we're trying to do with it. So it, all of this is going to depend on time-wise, what our public works department, things that they have going on because they've got the equipment and, and things that we're using to clean this area up, so. Anybody have any questions on anything?
Yeah. Roger, the property west of Veterans Drive, you said that there's a lot of drug dealings and niches going on.
Right.
So if there was to be put a walking trail in there, wouldn't that kind of keep that up?
Well, we're trying to get rid of all the excess underbrush and, and the small trees that are there. We're going to leave the mature trees that are there and open it up and, and to where that you can see all the way through it. And part of it's going to end up going into burial grounds that we can make this area out of and make it a presentable, you know, looking and get rid of all that. They've got the cover right now to go down in there to hide. They build fires down in there and do drugs and things like that all the time. So we pick up more needles and things along that timber down there than, you know, we care to. Right on.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Roger.
Okay, thank you. Item number two I have today is that there is an emergency purchase made by the mayor and City Administrator Shaw last week. The, there is need to be, there was a need to make a repair to the belt press at our central plant, and so obviously this is an essential piece of equipment for operation of our water plant. So there is a resolution, and then there are two ordinance to pass to amend the budget and approve the decision.
Any council discussion regarding this? All right. We'll call for the reading of the resolutions.
Resolution 1990, a resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 relating to the repair of the belt press central plant.
May I have your approval? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-175, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 regarding repair to belt press central plant.
May I have your approval? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2022-175, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 regarding repair to belt press central plant.
Second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-175, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 regarding repair to belt press central plant.
Final passage?
Second.
Rule published.
Bogus is absent. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Call for the reading of the second ordinance.
Bill number 2022-176, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for repair, replace parts on belt press at the central plant.
Second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number 2022-176, an ordinance approving and accepting a quote for repair, replace parts on belt press at the central plant.
Final passage?
Second.
Rule published.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
And Bogus is absent.
The third item I have tonight is another budget amendment and approval for a quote. So we have resolutions and two ordinances. The pumps at the 32nd Street lift station have started to fail. Through those staff that's been able to repair and manually restart these pumps, it has become quite competitive, therefore it's more beneficial to replace these pumps. Since we are in the beginning stages of the budget session, season, the proper way to do this, or the most efficient way to do this would be to purchase and replace one of the pumps now and then replace the second pump in the next fiscal year.
Any council discussion regarding this? Having heard none, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 1991, a resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year 2022- A resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three relating to the purchase of replacement pump at thirty-second Street Lift Station.
Motion to, motion to approve? Second. Call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Call for the reading of the first ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-seven. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three regarding purchase of replacement pump at thirty-second Street Lift Station.
Second reading?
Second. Call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-seven. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three regarding purchase of replace, replacement pump at thirty-second Street Lift Station.
Final passage?
Second. Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent and Cross?
Yes.
Call for the reading of the second ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for purchase of pump for thirty-second Street Lift Station.
Final passage?
Roll call for, uh, uh, call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-eight. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for purchase of pump for thirty-second Street Lift Station.
Final passage?
Roll call please.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Cross?
Yes.
And Foster?
Yes.
Fourth item I have tonight is a budget amendment. So, it'll call for a resolution and an ordinance. Uh, with increasing revenue from contractors putting in fiber optics and the right-of-way and their fees, we need a budget amendment to recognize these companies.
I, I did have a question on this one, uh, Director Rogers. The hundred and ten thousand dollars we've collected in right-of-way excavation permits. So, when they say whenever they're straining the, uh, water lines, does that money come out of that or so? Okay, so we're billing the company then on top of the hundred and ten thousand we collected? Perfect, okay. That was my, my question then.
Any other council discussion? All right, we'll call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution nineteen ninety-two. A resolution authorizing an increase in budgeted expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three relating to utility inspectors for excavation and right-of-way.
Motion to approve and- Call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Call for the reading of the ordinance?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-nine. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three regarding utility inspectors for excavation and right-of-way.
Second reading?
Call a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventy-nine. An ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three regarding utility inspectors for excavation and right-of-way.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
This is the final item I have tonight for scope and service, of services. So, during the budget process, staff proposed and we approved the design part of the next phase of improvement of the water distribution system in the area along Grand from Twentieth Street to Thirty-second Street. Staff recommends approval to add this design work to our contract with Wilson and Company. I was an on-call engineer for these types of projects.
Any council discussion regarding that? Have you heard none? Call for the reading of the order?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one eighty. An ordinance approving and accepting a scope of services for water system maintenance on South Grand Avenue from West Twentieth Street to the city limits.
Second reading?
Second. Call a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one eighty. An ordinance approving and accepting a scope of services for water system maintenance on South Grand Avenue from West Twentieth Street to the city limits.
Final passage?
Second.
Roll call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Hello, how do you, Roger? Thank you, Chairman Oldham. Uh, Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
I have no report tonight.
All right, thank you. Uh, on the public safety, uh, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Randy Dapson, the Animal Service Manager, has developed a plan to help reduce the number of animals that are repeatedly allowed to be in nuisance. She has worked with legal, with bring forth legislation to impose progressive regulations on repeated violations of current codes. These added regulations are designed as tools to more readily downsize the repeated offenders and reduce the number of animals owned by a responsible pet owner. If she would like, if you have questions of her, if you'd like to ask, there may be questions they have of this ordinance. Do you have a copy of the ordinance?
Have you guys had a chance to read the ordinance, or do you have any questions regarding that?
I don't.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate you taking time to look at it.
Thanks.
Any further council discussion? Have you heard none? Call for the reading of the order?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one eighty-one. An ordinance amending section eight dash one forty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri relating to dogs and cats running at large.
Second.
Second reading? Or-
Go ahead.
We have a lot.
Second reading, please.
Call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number two thousand twenty-two dash one eighty-one. An ordinance amending section eight dash one forty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sedalia, Missouri relating to dogs and cats running at large.
Final passage?
Second. Roll call please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Uh, next we have appointments. Call for the, you read of the appointments, please?
To members of the city council, from Mayor Andrew Darst-Dawson regarding new appointment to the Sedalia Public Library Board, Emily Schmidt completing Chris Pasworth's term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve? Second. Call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Uh, next we have liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor license?
We have one new and one renewal. New liquor license for Christie Long doing businesses Wildlife Ridge, Wa- Rhino, Rhinoery. Um, at thirty-four seven fifty-one Miller Roads, Minton, Missouri, for the Child Safe Dessert Auction, November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. At the Foundry, it's a special event license. And a renewal license for Crystal Sims doing businesses Woods Express, number five seventy, at seven oh-three East Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
Call a favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Any miscellaneous items from, uh, city council or city administrator?
I know, uh, Sunday there was a fire at, uh, on South Kentucky about two fifteen. And, uh, soon as we seen the smoke, five minutes later, the fire department was there and had it all under control. So, my hat's off to the fire department. Good job.
Yeah, it was a, it was a pretty rough Friday night for the fire department and including in the county, I think, for, you know.
Yeah.
Several fires around.
They did a fantastic job. They had to work. Lucky to have-
Sedalia Alliance had its first annual downtown spirit walk. And it was, it was very, very interesting. It was more of a good history lesson. And some key figures in our past. And so, I'm interested in how it'll progress and improve next year. More history to be added. So, great job to Jolie and everybody who was involved in that. We also have our Central Regional Meeting, uh, this Wednesday for our staff and for council.
I would like to officially congratulate, uh, Jason on becoming our new county clerk. We were, we were discussing before the meeting, he's got twenty-four years to go to catch up to our-
And he's got twenty-four, twenty-five in.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Yeah. I want his way. Uh, anything else? Well, now we'll go ahead and open up the meeting to the public. Uh, if you'd like to go ahead and, uh, step up to the podium if you have something you want to say or address council law, you've got, uh, three minutes. Say your name and your address. Come on up. We don't give many visitors, so.
Well, I've never done this before, and I'm not good at talking in public. But the city ordinance is, it's today you can have a cow, one horse in the city limits that you're not allowed to have. Miniature goats. And I would like to see what I can do to try to change that. I have three that I've had since they were born. I bottle-fed them. I walk them twenty minutes a day on the leash up and down the road. And, I mean, they're quieter than the dogs in the neighborhood. I mean.
Yeah, I think for horses and cows, they have to have so much property, don't they?
Yeah.
For animals?
Yeah.
So, we have no order to score goats.
Yeah, no, it's illegal to have goat in the, in the city of Sedalia within the city limit.
So, what you saying, could that be changed to allow it?
Yeah, could, I mean, could more people than you know have pet goats in the city?
I know.
I, I think we need the roosters to give me progress. Yeah.
And then we can, we can certainly look into that part of the thing. And what was your name and address for-
Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra Clark, and I live at six, what, East Ninth Street. And I just bought this house in February, and I know that apparently the city of Sedalia cops aren't aware that they are illegal to have in the city limits because every cop I talked to said, yes, you can have them as long as they're miniature goats. And, um-
How much land do you have?
I have a, a lot and a half. I mean, well, two lots. My house is on a lot, and then I have an empty lot beside me.
You got fences?
Uh, I've got them in a fence here, and they ha- I have a shed. That's what I mean. I wouldn't even bought this house that I'd known. I would have to get rid of my goats.
Yes, yeah.
And if I, if they can't get it changed, I'm, I mean, I'm gonna sell my house. I mean, that's, that's how much I love my goats.
Yeah, she, she showed me a picture of her house that the goats go in, and they got beds. And they all know which bed that they're gonna sleep on.
Well, we appreciate you coming down.
I mean, I'm, I'm going to court over it now, so, yeah, I mean, will, will they just let me know or?
When's your court date?
Uh, January fourth. I've already been once, and this time I go in front of middle houses.
Okay, roll, roll up into it.
Would you say your address in school sometime?
Six forty East Ninth.
Do you have another lot?
You have a lot beside me.
Looks like the little houses aren't close enough.
No, there's no house beside me. On the left side of me.
There? Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I will, is there anybody else? No, no tankers? All right. I will, uh, go ahead and entertain a meeting to, uh, move into closed-door meeting.
Motion to close-door session for negotiating contracts, legal advice, and real estate.
Second. Roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus is absent, Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Liz?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
It's closed, right?
Oh, yep.
Motion to approve. Motion to adjourn.
I gotta wait, I gotta wait.
Take what?
Do we have a motion and a second?
Thank you.
Second, second. Thank you.
Hi, guys. How's it going?
Oh, thank you.